Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the West Orange Board of Education Public Board Meeting Wednesday, March eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, which was postponed from the original date of Monday, February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, due to inclement weather. I would like to thank you, all of you here in person and those watching from home for joining us tonight. I'd like to welcome my fellow board members as well as Dr. Sean and Ms. Flowers. And Ms. Flowers, would you please take the role?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Roll call, please. Mr. Ifker?
Here.
Mr. Stevenson?
Here.
Ms. Tony Cliff?
Here.
Vice President Werta?
Here.
President Rock?
Here.
Thank you. Notice of meeting, please take notice that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The New Jersey Open Publics Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests are discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, a written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board on January sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. That said notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and by mail to the Star Ledger. That said notice was posted in the lobby of the Administration Building of the Board of Education and posted on a district website at www.wobo.org. Please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and may be broadcasted on local TV and the district's website at a future date. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, in consideration of the closed and public meeting of January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three, can I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any comments? Hearing none. Ms. Flowers, please take the roll call.
Mr. Ifker?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Werta?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and good evening to our student liaisons, Lance and Diana. Would you two please share your report at this time?
Uh, good. Congratulations to Jazzy Lopez, as she made school history by becoming the first freshman to win the North to the North Two Regional Wrestling Championship. The Royal Capital Honor Society is currently partnering with the Gender Sexual the Gender Sexuality Alliance and the Black Student Union to highlight Black queer historians on their bulletin board by including graphics and information about each trail racer. Tickets for the West Orange High School Spring Musical Grease are now on sale. The show dates are from February, March thirty-first to Sunday, April second. Visit wobo.org where you can find the link to purchase tickets. On Thursday, February second, the West Orange High School Orchestra Program presented their winter orchestra concert. The West Orange High School Student Council and Jubilee Choir held the annual Black History Month Scholarship Gala on Friday, February third. This event included the Jubilee Choir. Um, but this event included performances by the Absolute Boy Step Team, Automo Precision, Precision Girl Step Team, and Jubilee Choir. Um. In addition to this, Western High School Class of twenty seventeen alumni Justin Davis, a current Western Police Officer, spoke as a guest speaker. On Thursday, February seventh, the Faculty Scholarship Concert was held at Liberty Middle School, featuring numerous faculty performances. On February, on Friday, February tenth, the Western High School Spanish Club Scholarship Dinner was held.
Congratulations to the Western High School Hockey Team on winning the McMullen Cup for the first time in nineteen years, beating Scotch Plain three to two on Wednesday, February fifteenth. On Thursday, February sixteenth, the Western High School Jubilee Club presented the Black History Month Concert. On Wednesday, February twenty-second, the Western High School Dance Program presented their winter dance concert titled Interpolations. Congratulations to the Western High School Sports Media Association, which celebrated their one-year anniversary on Thursday, Feb-February twenty-third. Over the past year, the Sports Media Association has held Media Days for numerous sports teams, launched a voter registration campaign, campaign, organized a school-wide dodgeball fundraiser, had their photo gallery website reach over one million photo views. They've launched a sports live stream with play-by-play commentary. They organized a hometown champions event at Town Hall. Um, plus and more. Currently, the Western High Schools, the Western Sports Media Association has partnered with Pepe's Barbecue and Fortissimo to highlight student athletes of the week. Uh, athletes of the week chosen so far have included Bailey Cox from Track and Field, Andrew Raymond from Ice Hockey, Anna Deer from Girls Basketball, Jensen Tuesday from Boys Basketball, and this week, Justin Scavalla from Boys Soccer. On Monday, March sixth, the NJAJE Jazz Competition was held in the Liberty Middle School Auditorium, which started at eight AM. On Tuesday, March seventh, the Districtwide Jazz Concert was held in the Western High School Auditorium from seven to nine PM. And lastly, we would like to thank the Board for hearing our requests for the return of uh, after-school late buses, as there are now four o'clock late buses available. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that report. Dr. Sean, you're up next. Would you please share your superintendent's?
I would be more than happy to. Good evening, everyone. The West Orange Public Schools is pleased to announce that approximately two hundred additional preschool seats will be available for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year as part of Year Two Preschool Expansion Plan for General Education Students. In partnership with local providers, the district is currently serving one hundred and fifty preschool students across three locations, West Orange Early Childhood Learning Center, West Orange Community House, and Montclair Child Development Center Head Start in Montclair. In partnership with local providers, the district is planning to expand preschool offerings across approximately six different locations for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The additional preschool locations pending board approval will be posted in June of two thousand and twenty-three. All three and four-year-old residents of the West Orange Public Schools are eligible to pre-register. Three-year-old students already enrolled in preschool program for both district and private provider classrooms will be given first priority for the twenty-three, twenty-four enrollment. Remaining preschool seats will be assigned on a first-come, first-served basis. First-come, first-served applies to parents and guardians that have fully completed the registration process to include the submission of all required documentation to the district's registration office. The registration process for preschool expansion will be open until all seats are filled. This process began on March sixth, along with two in-person bilingual pre-registration events held last night at Washington and tonight at Hazel Elementary. Need to pre-register online or in person, schedule a meeting with the District Registration Office, and students will be assigned to location by the district. Preschool students requiring special services will apply directly to the Betty Madalena Early Learning Center Preschool Disabilities Program. The Preschool Disabilities Program follows a specialized process. To inquire about this program, please reach out to the BMELC Principal Connie Salameno to get more information. Our reregistration process has begun for the district and is ongoing. If you've yet to do so, please kindly complete and submit the necessary documents with the Registration Office. Since our last board meeting, there have been eight HIB investigations. I did review the summaries and the investigations of those reported. There are two confirmed and six non-confirmed. I concur with the findings of our anti-bullying specialists. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Sean, for that superintendent's report. Do we have any committee reports from the board? All right, seeing none. Uh, I will move on to my board president's report. And today I'd like to share a little bit about the Betty Madalena Early Learning Center. Our Betty Madalena Early Learning Center was featured in the February two thousand and twenty-three New Jersey Department of Ed's Special Education and Action Quarterly Newsletter, which can be found on the NJDOE website. The following is a synopsis of the outstanding work of our preschool recently. Speech and occupational therapists came together in the Betty Madalena Early Learning Center, where students and staff participated in stations that worked on a variety of functional skills. Emphasis was placed on building activities that reflected the multicultural influences of the community and further developed gross and fine motor skills. Other skills reinforced throughout the day were turn-taking, transitioning, both non-verbal and verbal communication skills, and emotional regulation strategies. While the day was filled with thematic activities and a wide range of skill streaming opportunities, it also provided hands-on professional development for teachers and paraprofessionals. Due to the profound success of this event, the school staff are evaluating future opportunities. All right, next on the agenda is board policies. We have the second reading of one policy, and we have the first reading for a slate of other policies as indicated in the agenda. Uh, may I have a motion to adopt the board policies, item A, attachment two?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Werta. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing none. Ms. Flowers, please take the roll call.
Mr. Ifker?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Werta?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next we will have questions from the public on agenda items only. Any community member who would like to make comments or ask questions, please come to the podium at this time. Please state your name and home address for the record, and then begin your comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Alwyn Eversley, and I reside at fifty-two Gilbert Place in West Orange. My question, I'm a new resident to the community, so I have a couple of questions around the pre-K process. My wife started the process, I believe it was Tuesday, she registered, and she was told that our son would be able to register, come down and register the following day. However, someone called her and told her that the appointment was not until April third because they're doing first the bilingual registration. And I'm just a little, I just want a little clarification around that because I want to make sure everybody's being treated in a very equitable and a very fair way. Um, for example, with the bilingual appointments, for example, and also for the children in the existing program, the way how it's being explained is the ones that have existing already enrolled, they get priority. Although that disadvantage is, for example, members who just move into the community and also uh, parents who, for whatever reason, decided to homeschool their children during the pandemic. So I really need to know how that's addressed because it doesn't seem to be very equitable. You have two hundred slots, and already those slots are being, um, they're being directed towards students. From what I understand, they're already enrolled in the program, they have the priority, and then the, um, the bilingual, unless I'm mistaken. Love the clarification. I, I just want a more equitable and fair process for new members moving into the community and for those now currently enrolled into the service, so so my child and other children can benefit from the pre-K program. Thank you.
Yes.
Am I good? Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
And we absolutely want everything to be equitable. Would you be kind enough to leave me your name and your phone number? And I, I will have it addressed personally tomorrow morning to be sure that you, uh, can get everything needed to be done for your child. Consider it done.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, uh, seeing no one else with public comments on the agenda, we will move on to our resolutions. May I have a motion to approve the personnel items A one through six?
So moved.
Thank you, Vice President Huerta. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Tony Cliff. Want to take a moment to congratulate the following retirees. Erin Haliblian, a kindergarten teacher at Mount Pleasant Elementary for her eighteen years of service. Joanne Mace, a second grade special ed teacher at Gregory Elementary for her twenty-two years of service. Viviana Contreras, a paraprofessional at Washington Elementary for her twenty-six years of service. Judith Damiano, a paraprofessional at the West Orange High School for her twenty-two years of service. Ida Del Garcia, an administrative assistant at Central Office for her twenty-five years of service. Ernest Jean Louis, a part-time bus driver in transportation for his seven years of service. And Catherine Lee, an administrative assistant at Hazel Elementary for her sixteen years of service. Uh, thank you all, yes. Thank you all for your service to the West Orange students and our school community. Welcome to the club where every day is Saturday, and best wishes on behalf of the Board of Education. Uh, is there any other discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none. Uh, Ms. Flowers, would you please take the roll?
Mr. Ifker?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Werta?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, now may I have a motion to approve the Personnel Item A seven, which is the resolution to approve the contract for our next superintendent of schools, Mr. Hayden Moore, commencing July one, two thousand and twenty-three.
So moved.
Think Mr. Stevenson got that. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Huerta. Is there any, uh, discussion on the motion?
Mr. President, I would just say in support of this motion that this is a decision that the board went through or the prior board went through, uh, during last term. Uh, this board stands in support of the nomination of Mr. Moore to become the next superintendent. Uh, I will just quickly say that Mr. Moore, as you saw when his appointment was announced at our meeting in September, I believe it was, had support from the community. Uh, one of our high school deans once said when Mr. Moore was appointed or was selected as educator of the year in two thousand and nineteen, he talked about just Mr. Moore as a leader and his ability to, uh, convene people around positive things. Uh, former superintendent of schools Jerry Turner once said Hayden Moore is the embodiment of a twenty-first century educational leader. He supports his students and his staff as a township resident who is an integral part of the culture and diversity of our community and who collaborates with parents and teachers on preparing our students for the future. Mr. Moore is readily accessible, a good listener on to varying opinions, and we know that happens in this town, and possesses both an energetic and congenial personality that allows all who interact with him to feel confident that our children are in good hands. So it's my honor as a board member, uh, to have supported Mr. Moore in this endeavor. Uh, and to really say, when I met, uh, his wife at a sporting event, she said to me, uh, yeah, and he really works really hard. And I think that sums it up. So, Mrs. Moore, thank you for that, for that summation of the work that Mr. Moore does. Uh, so that is my, uh, comment, Mr. President, with respect to the action that the board takes tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there any other comments?
Um, I'll just say that I cannot wait to celebrate Mr. Moore Day this year.
Thank you. Anyone else with comments? Just add that I'm thrilled that we can, uh, finally put the stamp of approval, the final stamp on this next chapter in your life, and I hope it is a long and successful one, and we look forward to everything that West Orange and you will accomplish together. I guess we should probably vote before we clap. Ms. Flowers, will you take the roll?
Mr. Ifker?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Tony Cliff?
Abstain.
Vice President Werta?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Moore. All right, moving on, may I have a motion to approve the curriculum and instruction items B one through three?
So moved.
Thank you, Vice President Huerta. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Tony Cliff. Uh, is there any discussion? Seeing none. Uh, Ms. Flowers, would you please take the roll call?
Mr. Ifker?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Werta?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next may I have a motion to approve the finance items C, special services items A, one through four, and business office items B, one through thirteen.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Vice President Huerta. I would like to acknowledge Jonathan Tick for the four hundred dollar donation to the Western High School Ultimate Frisbee Club and the U.S. Air Force for their computer equipment donation to the Western High School ROTC program and the Foundation for Impact on Literacy and Learning for their five hundred dollar donation to the Hazel Elementary School. And lastly, but definitely not least, the Drama Boosters for their donation of six thousand, six hundred dollars to the Western High School Musical and Play for Supplies. All right, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Ms. Flowers, would you please take the roll?
Mr. Ifker?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Werta?
Yes.
And President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next may I have a motion to approve D, HIV Reports, items one through two.
So moved.
Thank you, Vice President Huerta. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Tony Cliff. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Uh, Ms. Flowers, please take the roll.
Mr. Ifker?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Werta?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much to all of my board colleagues. Next up, we have petitions and hearings of citizens for any agenda or non-agenda items that you wish to discuss. You will have three minutes to speak. Please approach the podium at this time, state your name and address for the record.
Adam Kramer, Twenty Moran Road, West Orange, New Jersey. Um, I had handed this to Board Member Ifker and hope that he handed this to you so you can follow what I'm speaking about. The abstract of the Essex County Tax Board came out, and unfortunately, West Orange is number one in a dubious category. West Orange has, by far and away, the highest percentage of property value that needs to be devoted to school tax. Um, as you see from this, uh, actually, there's a mistake in what I circled. South Orange is point two, point two zero nine, we're point, two point zero seven, meaning that it takes a higher percentage of our value of a home to go to taxes here than any place else in the county. The sad fact is, we're in about the highest tax county in anywhere, and I have researched every state and federal database. And not for a lack of trying, I could find no jurisdiction that has a higher school tax levy rate than we do. It's not a number one thing that I want to be known for in my town. The state is going to giving you additional aid this fiscal cycle. Four point nine million, assuming the Murphy budget as proposed sails through the legislature unchanged. Being fiscally responsible and delivering education at a reasonable cost to taxpayers is not easy. I don't envy your task. It's hard. It may require doing some things that are different because we're in a very different tax bracket, different from our neighbors. Some of these things may be unpopular. Our neighbors have their employees in the state plan. We don't. Our neighbors don't, generally don't offer bus service at the end of athletics. We do. Our neighbors don't have any courtesy bussing. We have some people who I am convinced can have their students travel safely, easily, by foot, without bussing. That would save money. We also have administrators in grammar schools where comparable districts don't. I value education. I don't mind paying taxes. But I want my taxes to be reasonable, and I want my taxes to be focused on curriculum and instruction, and I want my taxes to go such that every student leaving here gets to be educated, have a sense of numeracy and literacy and succeed. Unfortunately, the tax base can't support the extraneous stuff, and we need to find efficiencies. I want you to make the tough decisions and advocate for the long time beleaguered taxpayers in this budget cycle. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Next.
Good evening. Stephanie Ladon, I live at eleven Old Salem Road. I am a St. Cloud parent, a founding member of the St. Cloud Diversity Council, Chair of our Council's Black Lives Matter School Week of Action. Today, I speak on my own behalf. I'm here this evening to ask that the board and our administration begin the proper planning and preparation to train our teachers and our staff in culturally responsive pedagogy so that in two thousand and twenty-four, we may fully and completely acknowledge and host Black Lives Matter at Schools Week of Action in our district. Black Lives Matter at School is a national coalition founded in two thousand and sixteen, organizing for racial justice and education. Guided by thirteen principles, the Week of Action aims to incorporate age-appropriate lessons on structural racism, intersectional Black identities, Black history, anti-racist movements into our classrooms. I've been working with a group of dedicated parents of St. Cloud to host this Week of Action at our school since two thousand and twenty-one. And while we've been able to incorporate some principles, diversity, empathy, intergenerational, loving engagement, collective value into our classroom, each year we've been explicitly informed by our local school leaders and most recently by our district leaders that our children cannot engage with principles like unapologetically Black, Black villages, trans-affirming, queer-affirming, because our teachers are not prepared to have these conversations with them. Our teachers are not prepared to talk to our students about what it means to be unapologetically Black. So that's the conversation we can't have in our schools. Here's a quick look into what is happening in our schools. Just a few weeks ago, my Black biracial daughter came home to inform me that a student made negative comments about our skin color and our hair in the presence of a teacher who did not address the incident. And when another student told the teacher what happened, the teacher said nothing. During Black Lives Matter at School Week of Action this February, a student told my child that Black Lives Matter at School Week was racist because there's no White Lives Matter at School Week. Add this to the numerous incidences of overt racism, racial microaggressions that other families have disclosed to me privately that I won't share here. While we wait for the district to feel comfortable, for adults to figure out how to have these conversations, our children are already having them, and there's real racial harm happening when they do. There's a lot of work that we need to do towards racial justice and equity to accomplish in our schools. As part of this work, I'm asking that the board take the necessary steps to prepare and train teachers around key principles and DEI concepts for the district-wide adoption of Black Lives Matter School Week of Action in West Orange for two thousand and twenty-four. Work to develop an infrastructure of support that will ensure the ongoing professional development and curriculum revision required for success for this Week of Action. I'm in full support and in deep gratitude for our teachers. I'm not looking to make demands for standardized assignments across curriculum. I'm asking for institutional support, training, and development. Black Lives Matter at School Week of Action belongs in our schools. It belongs in our district, not only because our district is more than eighty percent Black and Latinx students who deserve to learn that their joy, their freedom, and their authentic selves are worthy of celebration, but because instilling these knowledge, this knowledge, and these principles in all children, honoring and celebrating Black lives in the way that white lives have been celebrated in our curriculum for generations, that's the way toward a more just and equitable world. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marie De Mayo. Print, uh, I'm the president of the Administrators Association. You'll excuse my voice. On behalf of the West Orange Administrators Association, I would like to congratulate Hayden Moore as the Board of Education approves his contract as superintendent of schools commencing July one, two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Moore is an educational leader who has touched many lives. He is a wonderful human being, and his great attributes have led him to the superintendent's position. Please remember, Mr. Moore, we will continue to support you now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Matt Dragon. I live at thirteen Sheridan Avenue. Good evening. Uh, my daughter is a fifth grader at St. Cloud, and I'm here tonight to ask you to prioritize support for Black Lives Matter at Schools Week of Action at the district level. I'm asking you to do this for a few reasons. First, my daughter will be moving on from St. Cloud, and so we're moving away from the amazing work of the St. Cloud Diversity Council. These volunteers provide their time, expertise, and a ton of hard work. These volunteers provide their time, expertise, and a ton of hard work to try to make sure our kids see their own diversity represented in their educational spaces. In-school events, take-home activities, and parent roundtables have allowed our children and ourselves to become better informed and active members of our school and surrounding community. Looking forward, not having this council at my daughter's future schools already feels like a loss. My second reason is that since its inception at St. Cloud, the council has regularly had to scale back their proposals. Despite being established, bringing established, vetted lesson plans and research and offering to bridge any gaps, the council has been told the district must approve such lessons on timelines that make their inclusion impossible or that the teachers aren't comfortable or aren't trained to teach these items. This is an unacceptable response. Our kids, your students, are exposed to and struggle with issues like anti-blackness, white supremacy, and a whitewashed version of history daily. These issues are omnipresent, both inside and outside of the classroom, and to say the teachers aren't comfortable or prepared for them is as ridiculous as saying they aren't prepared to teach algebra or E L A. You would decry that lack of preparation as failing our students, and rightfully so. New Jersey's role in slavery, well documented but little known, may provide us a path forward. In addition to ports instrumental to enslavement in Camden and Perthamboy, the New Jersey Legislature rejected the Thirteenth Amendment, and the laws enabling slavery survived in New Jersey even after Juneteenth, now a state holiday in New Jersey. But our state's dark history means we are not without resources at the state level. The New Jersey Amistad Commission is one possible source of curriculum and training that could help our staff feel comfortable teaching about Black Lives Matter as the latest response to hundreds of years of devaluing black lives by our state and country. So in addition to incorporating Black Lives Matter at School Week of Action district-wide, I ask that you adequately fund and prioritize the training of our staff and preparation of curriculum to ensure, excuse me, to ensure this week is not just a note on the calendar. And since I've got fifteen seconds, you should spend the extra money we're getting from the state on training the teachers in issues like this. I want you to invest in our students, not just my daughter, but every child that lives in West Orange, and I would encourage you to think long and hard where that money can go before it gets just returned in a lump sum to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Felicia Ekajuba, and I live at twenty-six Chestnut Road. I am here tonight to ask the board to begin the process of drafting and passing a resolution that will designate the first week in February as Black Lives Matter Week in action in West Orange schools. As the two speakers before me, I am part of the St. Cloud Diversity Council, and I have been a witness to the incredible work that they're doing in the St. Cloud School. The B L M at School movement pushes us towards a more equitable school experience where we can end zero tolerance punitive punishment policies that disproportionately target black and brown youth. And imagine the implementation of restorative justice in all schools where we can work to hire more black teachers in our schools so that students may see themselves reflected in the role models before them and toward a school curriculum that mandates the inclusion of black history and ethnic studies in every single one of our schools. With a school district as racially diverse as ours, with over eighty percent of our students identifying as black or Hispanic, it is time that West Orange Public Schools becomes intentional, not just about teaching black and African-American history, but about showing our students and our community what it means to honor and celebrate black histories, black lives, black joy, and black freedom. Please consider moving forward on this designation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Xavier Fitzgerald, acting principal of Liberty Middle School.
Start the clock, Ms. Flowers.
She did. There we go. She probably told you to start that clock. I'm a quick say. Okay. Um, I came out tonight to give my support and congratulations to Hayden Moore first and foremost. I have worked in this district now for eighteen years, the past seventeen years being at Edison and this year being at Liberty. And I remember eighteen years ago when I was the only person of color sitting in a room with administrators, central office people. I can now look at the true diversity of West Orange and what it really means and how far in those eighteen years it truly has come. Because there were times when there were things that were said in the meeting that I had to hold myself and say, oh, my God, did this person just say this out loud? When we talk about microaggressions or macroaggressions, I was in a room when those things were said. And so when I see Mr. Moore and I see a Lionel Hush, and I see a Cheryl Butler, and I see an Oscar Guerrero, and I see all the faces, you have no idea how far this eighteen-year journey has been for me. So when I hear parents coming to the mic saying we need to celebrate Black Lives Matter, and we need to make sure that we train the teachers, I'm going to say to the board, and I'm going to say to the parents also, it's not a matter of training them. That's one part of it. It's also making people feel comfortable in having the conversations because even people of color have a problem with having that conversation. You can train them all you want to, but until they're ready to have that conversation that can at times be uncomfortable, sometimes confrontational, can't really make a move. You can't really challenge. You really can't push the envelope. So I really wasn't coming here to speak about that. I was coming to say congratulations to Mr. Moore. But as you can see, we have a deeper, we have a further, we have a long way to go, is what I'm going to say. We've come a long way. I'm looking at Tanya Flowers, and I hired Tanya, and she was the second black math teacher in this district. Al Austin was the first. I can go down the line with Monique Lyons, who I hired after you, and I can go down the line after that to Shaila Jana. These are math teachers that have come and gone, and they're still in this district because they were nurtured. They're comfortable in being uncomfortable. When Tanya left, it's like, good luck. I hope I see you soon. And here she is. Now our business administrator. So she took that math, and she took it one step further. God bless you on that one. But I want you to understand that the journey doesn't stop just because we have these people in place. There are still places that we need to go and grow as a community and as a people. And if we can do that together, West Orange will be okay. But again, I just came to say congratulations to my man Hayden Moore. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else. Thank you very much. Our next regular board meeting will be held at seven thirty P M on March twentieth, twenty twenty-three. There will be a presentation of the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four preliminary school district budget. This meeting will be held in the West Orange High School Library Media Center. We will not be going into executive session after the close of this meeting. There will be no further business discussed and no additional action will be taken. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Vice President Huerta. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Tunnycliff. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you for joining us tonight. Our meeting is now adjourned. We wish you a good night.